All right. Don, you want to lead us into invocation in a minute?
Father, we thank you, Lord, for this time that we can come and do business, and I just pray, God, that we'll do it in in a way that would be honorable to you. Lord, pray for those that, right now, are seeing the hardship of super high temperatures, and those that are facing floods, and I just pray for them and their safety, and that they'll see some relief. God, help us tonight as we go about your business, that we do things in the right way, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Samantha, you want to lead us into the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and limited in justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. Start with roll call. Mr. Cottle?
Here.
Jeff Upton? Jan Throgmorden? Marty Lindebury?
Here.
John Collins?
Here.
Dana McKnight?
Here.
Don Rollins?
Here.
Jimmy Condon?
Here.
And our city attorney and city clerk are both present. So, first item of business is the adoption of our agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made? Anyone know that?
Nothing on it.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from our June thirteenth meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made to those? Motion?
I make a motion we approve as they are.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Will we welcome anyone from the public to address the council? We do ask that you keep your comments to two minutes or so. Who wants to go first? There's a couple of you.
Do you want to fight first, Steve?
Ladies first.
Go ahead, come on up, ma'am.
Okay.
Tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Hader, I'm also known as Janet. I live at fifteen North Sycamore Avenue in West Fork, and the house directly across the street from me, which would be twenty-three Redbud, it sits on the corner of Sycamore and Redbud on the eastern side. It was sold in October, and the former owner, Kathy, I believe rented it until May. Now, the new owner supposedly is from California, but nobody has shown up yet. And the grass was last mowed in April, I believe, and in some areas of the yard, it's literally four feet high, I mean, and the house looks terrible. Kathy left a lot of debris. There's buckets, well, they're in the garage, but there's stuff, and the grass is just, it's way overgrown, and I don't know if the city can track down perhaps who the new owner is, but I'm wondering if something can be done about it.
We can certainly try. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's it?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, young man, you're up next. Tell us who you are.
Steve Wayne, sir, and some people call me thirty-two percent. I live on McKnight Street, two forty-seven. I brought notes, because I want to go through this, I have several things, and I have two minutes. So, here, I'll just go down my list here. A couple of months ago, I mentioned it would be nice if we could see building permits that come before the council, and see who's getting them. And I thought, I got an nod of the head on that, but they're not appearing anywhere, so I don't know. It'd be nice to know who's building what in town, you know? I just wonder what they're building down there at McKnight's, what they're building south of town, you know? I got some last year's building permits from
I appreciate you.
from our administrator, there were five, as far as I could tell, last year. Okay, the other thing, the Die Creek property down there, a few months ago, no one had any idea what to do with it. We don't have a clue, we don't know what we're going to do. Seen it all off air, and now it looks like they're throwing hay. Well, hey, you know, we need hay, or something like this. But I hope that somebody's realized that if you throw hay, you're going to have to fertilize. And some people might think it's not a good idea to fertilize in that flood zone, because that runoff goes right into the thing. I don't know if you've thought about that. Another thing is the we have a Facebook page, y'all don't do Facebook, I know, but, called the West Fork History Project. I put things up on there, all the old histories, and on the recent history, and stuff like that, and there was an article on there about when Mitch McCorkle got awarded his thing for being on the the oldest guy and all that. I got a call from his daughter about wondering about the pavilion, I don't know where his truck is, that there's no plaque or anything there, there's no mention of him, and, you know, she was wondering, she offered to put in some contribute something to it, to have some kind of memorial thing, or what's that about down there? No one knows, really, it's just an old truck under a carport. So, I talked to, I gave her the mayor's name, his email, and then I gave her Jan Throgmorden, because Jan is the chaplain of the fire department, maybe they could do something. Jan didn't think, you know, West Fork's not very interested in history, and history, Claire, they don't, there's nothing history going on. All right, then, just, this is not important, Greta, but you've still got your Christmas card up on your Facebook page. Season's greetings from employees of West Fork. So, either you're late taking it down, or you're early putting it up.
Getting a head start, Steve. Getting a head start.
I'm sorry, getting a head start, yeah, I thought of that, I thought, those people are on the ball, they're like, yeah. Okay, and next will be the Christmas lights, I guess, going up, but anyway, then there are some Facebook, I know y'all are Facebook folks, you've mentioned that enough, but there are some interesting Facebook groups, there's one, there's a new one called Events in West Fork, that just is simply events. And Ms. Twill puts that up, I think. There's no lost dogs, there's no, you know, things like that, it's just people submit events that are happening in West Fork. Some are the library stuff, and things like that. It's pretty useful, and a lot of people really like it. This came up about meetings, you know, you hear all the time down here, I've been, always been, I've been around fifteen years, been a big advocate of people being, participating in the city. And I used to encourage people to come to the meetings, come to the council meetings, and you've heard, I've heard y'all say, come to council meeting, you know? Well, the question, after a while, you say, well, why? It's on video, you sit home and watch it, rewrite it, you know, look at the parts you missed. So, and then the other thing is, I've never seen the city advertise that the thing is on video. They didn't say out there on the mark, he be sure, catch that council meeting on your video YouTube, I've never heard them say anything about it. So, it makes me wonder, what's the thing with the, come to the council meeting? Is it because you wanted people to be well informed about what's going on in the city? Or you just like a live audience? You like people showing up here, and they're at, and talking, and you go complain for something like that? It makes you wonder, but you're not, you're not advertising, or you're not, to me, my view, you're not trying to make people understand what's going on in the city. You don't have any newsletter, you don't have, you know, you don't advertise, I let them go on here, and in my in my view, people being informed about what's going on in the city is one of the one of the key things about having a democracy, if you wanted to have a democracy, but of course, you don't. The other thing is, I happened to wander across the Elkins City Council.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's funny, it is six years, and still going.
Yeah.
Go ahead, continue on.
It's not going to stop. I'm pro-democracy.
Continue on, or sit down.
I'm pro-democracy.
If you're finished, sit down, if not, continue.
I'm not finished, and then, is my two minutes up?
It's getting real close.
Yeah, it is. All right, so I came across the Elkins Council meeting, and that was pretty informative, you know, you watch them, there's no differences. For one thing, I noticed is that behind there, mayor talking, they have pictures of former mayors, you know, on the wall, former mayors, it's kind of a, maybe they're interested in history. And, you know, nothing in this building about any kind of history. And the other thing is, that I thought was interesting, well, you notice things, you notice that they don't laugh near as much in their meetings as they do in these meetings. If you go back and look at these videos of these meetings, you're going to say, what's so funny? It's like a gig, it's like a social club or something. And the other thing about their meeting, the main thing that I liked, well, wait, there's two things, one is, they have a section called Committee of the Whole. I promoted that idea, it's in my Winkler for Mayor Facebook, I've talked about it a lot, it's used around the country, it's a way to do in meetings, it's called Committee of the Whole, where basically, during the meeting, you kind of go to another section of the meeting, people can talk. And it's a lot better than this thing we have with this two-minute, you know, it's a way for people to participate in the thing. And they do that, Elkins uses it, and also Tiny Town uses it, Committee of the Whole, you know, I'll look it up, see if it's much, no one likes this forum thing, it's, you know. So, anyway, and the other thing that I like about the Elkins, when they pray, they don't have to stand up. When they pray, they let the people sit there. Fascinating. That's all I got.
Okay, we sure appreciate it.
I'm sure you do.
All right, anyone else?
I would like to say that I appreciate what little bit of history we have in our courtroom, and outside on the walls, and and I myself am interested in West Fork history. I guess the rest of you guys are just a bunch of ones that don't like history.
Thank you for that, Don.
Sorry.
Anything else? And I'm sorry, Steve, if I made you stand up when we prayed, I I didn't ask you to, but maybe you felt
Did I respond to that, or anything? Or am I just sitting here listening to you?
No, you can respond, I didn't ask you to stand.
No. The controversy's been here before about praying before meetings. There's going to be no change in that, we know that. But some people, some Christians don't like to pray in public, because of, it says in the Bible, you can't go to hell if you pray in public. So, some people don't even, well, that's the exact word.
I was going to say, could I get the verse on that?
But it says they'll do it, and the other, and even Christians don't, but, and the other thing is, that you're asking people to participate in your personal understanding of God. You're asking people to do that, and you're putting a pressure on them when they come in here, that they need to do that. And they may do it, but it doesn't need to be standing, you can bow your head, that way you can get away with that being so conspicuous and everything. I stand for the pledge, and
Well, I appreciate that.
But you also live in a free country where you can do either or or not.
Yeah, that's, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, do whatever you'd like, but don't expect anybody else to do it the way you want it.
Well, you're expecting other people to do it the way you want it.
I don't expect you to do anything.
See, several others here, there's an invocation?
That just says what's happening, that don't mean you have to do it.
I'm not going to get into a religious debate here, but
Good, good, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so
Can I just say one more thing, Simon?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you mentioned about wanting people to come to the meetings, and I think that's really important, because then they have their two minutes, or if we were to have a Committee of the Whole, whatever version, it gives people a chance to have their voice heard. If you're watching a video online, two days later, your voice can't be heard in that moment when a discussion is happening. So, to me, I think it's important, and also, I mean, granted, I haven't been to a couple of meetings lately, but in general, I feel like a lot of times when we're laughing, it's because we have camaraderie, and we have a community that cares about one another, and it is a role that we have, but we also, I feel like we're working together. And so, I mean, maybe I'm just speaking for myself, but that's how I feel about people coming to the meetings, and why we laugh, I mean, I can't speak for everyone's laughter, but in general, that's the way I feel about it, so, that's all I want to say.
Okay.
May I say something else? They might get a rebuttal. If we use the, if you use this Committee of the Whole, the way that they do it in the offices, what you do is you stop the meeting as a place, think of it as like an executive meeting, you say, okay, we're going to stop, we're going to Committee of the Whole, anybody can talk, and whatever's done in that section, I guess, nobody votes on it. So, people can have a discussion, and then after the Committee of the Whole is, okay, bang, that's closed, the Committee of the Whole is closed, you go back to your regular meeting where there can be discussions. But the way we're doing it, the person comes up, talks for two minutes, see you around, goodbye, then you can talk, but unless I stand up and be rude, then I can't talk. So, it's like the rules are saying, I can't talk, but you can talk. So, it eliminates people, it eliminates a lot of good discussion things, ideas, and that sort of thing, to benefit the town, that's what I think, and you know, it's used a lot of places around the country.
I think that's good input, so, thank you.
So, we'll close the public forum. Winkler hit a lot of topics, a lot of questions. Committee of the Whole, I feel like typically on on most issues, especially issues that we have public, that are here, that are wanting to participate in, I think before ever vote we've ever taken, we have opened that up for public discussion. Now, on some of the procedural stuff, no, we don't always do it, but on anything, I think that anyone's been here and wanted to discuss, I feel like the council has been open to those ideas and that discussion before we've taken a vote on it. Steve, I can assure you, we're not about to put any fertilizer down there on the side of the river. We let that grow up, and a lot of native grasses, trying to get grass foothold down there, so that it don't wash out. It got up tall, we need to do something about it, so we don't have a mess down there. So, we did cut the hay on it, to clean it up, slick it up. And then we've, we've came back, and I don't know if you've noticed, but we've mowed a trail around it. A lot of people like to go down there and walk. So, that's what we're doing currently, but no, we're not putting on a hay operation down there, and we won't be spreading any fertilizer.
Did I make a comment?
No. We're moving on.
No?
No. Business reports. And first up is the planning commission. Walter?
Evening. And also to that point, that's exactly how we run our meetings, basically. Granted, we have two, three people at our meetings most of the time, but anybody has an idea, they speak up, they talk about it, and you know, if we have something to vote on, we vote on it, if not, it's just discussion. But last month, we did not have any business items, so we just sat around and talked about what we would be getting into with the text of Title fourteen, and what changes will happen there, and what we've done so far, and
Can you explain what that is?
Yeah, Title fourteen, the zoning ordinance, so your R one, R two, right now, we did the future land use map and master street plan, now it's going in, actually defining out what some of the new R one will be, what, we've got a mixed use that we're kicking around, what that'll, you know, so your setbacks, your area that the building has to cover, all the specifics of developing that lot, and what byright uses you can do, and that's what we're also getting into, hopefully, for then the sign ordinance, when that can get going, so we'll have new zones that which different sign, hopefully, can get into, you know, different, however we want to do that, but so, yeah, that's what we're getting into next, and so we still have to schedule that with Juliette to get going with that, but it should be pretty soon. And, is that, oh, any other questions?
Well, I mean,
Yeah.
I'm also wondering about, I don't know how else to call it, the triangle, that, you know
Okay, yeah.
Are y'all going to be doing any more on that, or a possible road?
No, that's, that is done until somebody decides to develop that out behind there.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Because when it passed up here, and then at the next meeting, you mentioned something, you know, and then I thought, oh my God, are they doing more, so that's where, but that's why I wanted clarification, what y'all are working on, are you working on more, trying to push that?
No, we're not doing anything towards that, really, that's kind of done, that was to have a way to, in case somebody developed out back there, that they would have to put in a connector road up to Phillips. And, yeah. But, so, other than that, it's done, until somebody actually tries to develop that, and to a density that we require a road going out that way, so.
So, like, at this Thursday's meeting, like, what will y'all be doing?
All we'll be doing this upcoming meeting is talking about a reapplication of the subdivision that lapsed on the building on there, or starting, planning on their final plat, after they got their preliminary plat approved. They get a year after the preliminary plat, it didn't go, it's now owned by somebody new, new owners bought it, and they're going with what looks like the exact same plan, but they still have to submit all that paperwork, and we have to review it, and say that, yep, we can, you can move forward with it to your final plat. But that's all we're doing Thursday, so far anyways. We have until Friday, or till Thursday, this end of this week, for somebody to get something else in to be on the agenda. Yeah. Any other questions?
Anything for Walter? So, Walter, a couple of things, just to one, touch on something you brought up, and two, to just make you aware of something that came up, but so Walter did mention that on their agenda is, it's the Smith Street project.
Yeah. Rolling Plains.
Rolling Plains is what they're calling it, they, they came in, I think it's been right at a year and a half, getting close?
In October of twenty-one.
Okay. So, they came in, we approved everything. Those lots set out there, we subdivided it, it's twenty-eight lots. It's set there ever since. The original owner, who did all the work, the engineering work, all of that, plotted it out, has now sold the entirety of the project, or the land. The new buyer came by the city and said, hey, we're ready to get started on this. And we were like, well, the preliminary plat has expired, you have one year to get started. So, they're not making any changes to any of the design or engineering that has went on in the past, they're just wanting to come in and start building houses. So, that's kind of where we're at with that. That does have to go back through planning before it can be approved. But, that's, that's where we're at, twenty-eight new homes, and they were ready to start a week and a half ago.
Yeah, we were surprised it didn't get started when they first did it.
Yeah, so, new owner, and they're, I think they even already have some equipment setting down there, so.
And that's off Smith Street?
Yeah, if you turn and go up Smith Street, you run directly into that property.
Okay.
Like I said, it's twenty-eight
Right before you start heading up that real steep hill on Smith Street.
And how many acres are out there that they're going to build this on?
Roughly seven.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been a year, I can't remember.
So, there's that, and then Walter, also, you guys did a lot, a lot split about a month ago, I think it's your last, was it, I don't remember if it was the last meeting, but
Right.
At any rate, for Kreider.
Yes.
They've came in today, and they are, they are thinking about placement of a mobile home on that property, and while they build. So, that will probably come before you guys, and we do have some code that addresses that.
Christie handed me, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I remember reading through that at one point.
Yeah, it's not something we see
Very often, right?
Yeah.
At all, for my tenure on the planning commission.
Right, so that will probably be coming your way as well.
Okay.
Anything else, Walter? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is court report, Tracy.
We have been doing training and time off and different things like that, we're still trying to plug ahead. We got three new computers, we're having a little bit of problems with the computers, Gene is on it, parts are back ordered. He's having, he's having an awful time with them. But we got most of the problems resolved, we're just down to one little issue now, I think. And I guess our disbursements are down about five thousand from last month, and eight thousand from last year. And it looks like our year-to-date on our citations is about four hundred less than last year. And our current citations, we're down about seventy-five from last month, which I don't know what happened. I never know. Anyway, it's just random, sometimes they write tickets, and sometimes they don't. But I think the prosecutor's doing a good job for us. We had a ton of people here, the courtroom was full, I had people texting me saying, oh my gosh, where are we supposed to park? And we've not been that full in forever, I mean, we had, the prosecutor was actually seeing people for from eleven o'clock until about ten minutes till two on Thursday, I can't believe, I mean, it just, it was unreal, there were that many people here. I am not going to be here for next month's meeting, because I'll be in, I'll be, well, I'll be on the way to Little Rock for more training, Court Manager Program. I went and did that, we talked about project management, and learned a lot of things that we're going to try to put in, but we have a couple of projects that we're going to try to use the new project management training that I got, to get some of our things done that seem a little bit overwhelming at the moment. But I think everything's going good, we're plugging away.
Any questions for Tracy?
So, did you get all the logs and stuff that you were needing, or you know, the security issues that you brought up in the past few months, is all that?
Okay, so we don't have all the, everything done, we did have
Key fobs, or?
Yes, sorry, I meant to mention that, I did not make a note, I forgot. They came in on Friday, and they put in like our window tinting, I don't know if you've noticed or not, if you walk down the hall and you look, it's not like, it's not like mirrored glass or anything, but it kind of distorts the image, and I can see Jessica when I look through the window or the door, because I know where she is. But otherwise, you would have to stop and focus to be able to see all the way through, depending on where the light is, okay? But that part is good. We, they came out to install the fob, and something about the lock is not quite right, so they're supposed to be back out on Friday to take care of that. But I think those are the things that we had scheduled for security-wise. And then, I believe Christie said they're getting a new computer in here, and then that would take care of one other problem that we've been having. So. Okay, forgot to mention that, thank you for asking.
No, well, you know, like, in the past, you'd said, like, the name deals, that maybe the chairs needed to be buckled to the floor, and, you know, so it was kind of like, oh my gosh, so I didn't know what plans or ideas, or
So, the only thing we can do, like, they said there are things that you can get to strap the chairs together, like, not just what are those things called, wire ties, or?
Zip ties.
Yeah, those. Anyway, we would have, I can't find the things, they don't fit the kind of chairs that we have, the ones that are supposed to snap the chairs together, they look like they're all rounded. So, the zip tie thing would be what we would have to do in here, and I don't know that we're ready to do that, just yet.
Okay.
I like my elbow ring.
Yeah, no kidding.
You know, but, but that is something that we are considering, and we may just do it on the first couple rows, just to, because you'd have to throw it a pretty good ways to get up there after the first couple rows.
Any other questions for Tracy? Well, you do always have an officer in court, right?
We do. For the most part, I mean, ninety-five, ninety-seven percent of the time we do. If we're a little bit shorthanded, though, sometimes our bailiff will have to go out on a call, he's the only one that's on duty. And he always asks permission, if the judge is not comfortable, he'll say, I'm sorry, or something, but normally, he's like, yeah, go do what you got to do, I understand. So, but, yeah, the majority of the time, we have somebody in here. Okay?
Thank you. Thanks, Tracy. Next is the library report, Blair's gone tonight, we have a couple department heads that are out tonight, something to do with summer.
Vacations.
So, Blair did text me a couple of highlights. The library is now checking out disc golf material, so if you would like to play disc golf and do not own a set of discs, you can go to the library and check those out now. The parking lot project is set to begin in September, and we do have Henry's Hut relocated down to the library for some storage and different activities down there. Any questions about the library? No? Okay. Next, police department, Chief Halliburton.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Our crime stats for the month of June, we had three hundred and eighty-six calls for service, which was up over fifty calls from this time last year. Took thirty-two reports, and wrote eighty-five citations. Officer Beck has graduated from the FTO program, and he is now doing solo patrol on his own, working the day shift from six a.m. to six p.m. We've interviewed several people for the open full-time position, and we have yet to find an applicant that but we have hired one full-time, not part-time, officer, Sergeant Marsh, from the Washington County Sheriff's Office.
Any questions for chief?
How's it going so far?
It's going great, great, West Fork is a better city than I even enough could have imagined. I've really enjoyed it so far.
Did you make the news today?
I did make the news today.
They called me, wanting to know how to get ahold of you.
Thank you for giving them my number. I'm sure they won't share it with anyone else. But, yeah, it's, we had to enter my office about one o'clock, or two-thirty, it was two-thirty. Ellie tells me I did pretty good.
All right.
That was my first sit-down interview, I'm used to them just sticking a mic in my face, hey, tell me about, no comment, no comment. That's it, for the police department.
Anything else? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is Public Works, Isaac is absent as well. He texted you some highlights. He did not, he called me and told me he wouldn't be here and that was about all he said. So highlight, uh, our water loss report was really favorable this month. I believe it was eighteen and some change percent. But while we're here, we'll go ahead and talk about some other stuff. So we have, in the past, we have talked about getting Homestead hooked up to the city sewer. And we received some information, uh, I think last month we reported that, that the state had went ahead and, and said that they would allocate the funds, uh, that were, were still needed. Maybe that came this month. Last month, last month we knew, we found out that ANRC was gonna grant, uh, some loan forgiveness to that, or part of it. So we still needed some more from the state. Well, the state just came out and said, yes, uh, we're willing to do it. We're gonna give you a loan of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, it has to be paid back over, I think, thirty years or something. And we are going to forgive eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the rest of the money that's needed to complete that project. So, sounded great. Uh, the state also came out and said that, you know, this is, this has to be settled by August fifteenth. Believe that's right. That we need an answer back by August fifteenth, um, which still all sounded good. However, they have since, they, when they sent that out saying that they would, that they were ready to fund it, they also said that we needed to expect, anticipate a increase in our sewer rates. And it was a large increase and they were actually calling it our water rates. And so we've called and said, what's going on with this? And they said, no, it's your sewer rates and they're gonna need to go up fifty-nine percent. Kind of worked for us to do it. Now, that being said, that was quite a shock to us. Um, and what we know is that we currently are not taking in enough revenue uh, with our sewer rates to cover our sewer bill and we're throwing sales tax dollars at that. Uh, the state has also gave us a sheet of paper that, uh, says should at any point during the term of this loan, revenues are not sufficient to cover the required debt service, the city will be required to increase their sewer rates. So unfortunately, I'm not, I'm not sure where to go with this. We're still.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do it, start out.
Kind of, yes, yeah. So the problem is, is are they going to, is that rate increase, are they gonna force us to do a rate increase whether or not we take on the Homestead project or not? And that's my concern, is that they are going to come to us and say that your, your rates are not covering your debt service and you're gonna have to increase them. Like I said, this stuff literally just came out. We, we don't have a lot of answers. We don't have a lot of answers for the multitude of questions that this has brought up. I don't know how in the world we can raise rates another fifty-nine percent on our sewer. I would really like to, to get Homestead tied into West Fork Sewer. Uh, that'd be good for the environment, it'd be good for, uh, the residents of Homestead, it'd be good for the city of West Fork. However, a fifty-nine percent increase is not gonna be good for anyone. On top of that, Fayetteville has a meeting planned for Monday, at which time we believe they are going to be discussing a sewer and water increase. This, to my knowledge, the agenda hasn't came out making this, uh, known yet, but that's, uh, we have reason to believe it will be on the agenda. And we have reason to believe that they are gonna be requesting a twenty percent increase in sewer rates, as, uh, uh, along with an increase in the water rates. So, uh, anyone that doesn't have plans for Monday night, the Fayetteville City Council gets started at five o'clock, I believe. And it would be good to have as many, many people there to, to discuss this as possible. I'm gonna be out of town, unfortunately. But we, we need to convince the city of Fayetteville that we are a wholesale customer of sewer. We should not be paying the same retail rates as Greenland and Farmington and even as the citizens of Fayetteville. The city of Fayetteville is not providing the same sewer services to us. We install our own taps, we, we fix our, we do our own maintenance and repair. They simply treat our sewer, we are a wholesale customer, we're defined as a wholesale customer in our current contract, uh, but we are not being charged as a wholesale customer. And, and their latest rate study from Black and Beach is not defining us as a wholesale customer. They're essentially defining us as a retail customer that, again, the city of Fayetteville is doing maintenance for. So, uh, Isaac will be at that meeting, uh, but is, I feel like the more people that can stand up and address that council, the council is, I feel they have been very receptive to the, the past meetings that I've been to to discuss this. And I feel like the council is, is aware of the situation and that, that West Fork and actually Elkins are in the same boat on this. So if we could get some representation there, I would, I would appreciate it. But we definitely have, uh, some concerns in that sewer, water sewer area that, that are coming upon us quick. Again, this deal with Homestead, they're saying you have to make a decision by August fifteenth. Typically just don't like anything that's in that big of a rush, uh, especially that kind of money. But we will continue to reach out to them and try to get more information and, and see where that comes out. But do expect that by next month there will be, uh, there will be a decision to make, whether it's yes, no, or, uh, whatever it is. We, we will have more information at, at next month's meeting. Any questions concerning that?
That's a bummer.
Well, if, if Fayetteville raises the rates and we're already not making it, then they're gonna request that we do the forty-nine percent or more anyway, whether we do Homestead or not.
Right. That, that, that is, that is our fear is, uh, whether or not we do Homestead or not, there's a, a high likelihood that the state's gonna come to us and tell us we need to do a rate increase.
So, so I guess what I'm saying is doing Homestead really may not have any effect on what they make us do.
Very true, yes. So the, the breakdown that they gave us today said that Homestead or no Homestead, our rates need to go up, well, no Homestead, our rates need to go up fifty-six percent to cover our current debt service. If we take on Homestead, our rates need to go up another three percent to a fifty-nine percent increase to cover both. So Homestead's eighty houses. Average sewer price currently is eighty-two dollars a month. That would be new revenue coming in to cover, I mean, it's, it's kind of one of those things. By bringing them on, it offsets some of the burden that we're, we're currently carrying. But the, the state's still saying that even with that, our rates need to go up. We're currently putting, uh, three hundred thousand a year. I mean, that's, that's kind of what we put in this year with sales tax to cover that, that debt service. Anything else?
What about with those extra twenty-eight, twenty-nine houses that might be coming in on Smith Street?
Again, it's, it's gonna help.
You're talking a year before that would even.
Yeah.
Before, yeah.
That's if they started to bar.
Right. Right. And so I will still contend that a lot of this comes down to when we first sat down with the state and they had someone that was dedicated to determining our rates and what they needed to be to fund this sewer expansion. They missed the mark. Now that person's no longer working at the state, they've moved on somewhere else. The problem is the burden continues to fall on the citizens of West Fork. And then with that, you know, last month we approved a refinance of those bonds. And that refinance was great. It, it lowers, uh, you know, the number of years that we have to pay that bond off. But what it didn't do was re-amortize our bond, right? So if you think of your house payment, if you were to go pay an extra hundred thousand on that today in principle, that would lower your payment amount, right? Not just the years, it, it would lower the payment amount. Well, with, with what, the, the way the state structured that, uh, that funding round that they gave us, that forgiveness that they gave us, it reduced the years we pay, but we have to continue paying the exact same amount on that debt service. And so it wasn't an immediate help like it could have been. So that's where we're at, Monday night, Fayetteville City Council. Anybody that can make it, anybody in the crowd that can make it, must be heard. Uh, council, uh, I would, uh, suggest continuing to check with Christie for any updates between now and the next meeting that we're getting on this. Uh, and Christie, Christie will get them sent out to you, but, uh, but stay up to date so that when we get to the next meeting, we at least have some idea of where we're, where we're at and what is, what has progressed since then, or since now. Okay. Next is Parks Report. And Chad is missing as well. Chad is actually sick.
Probably wore out?
Yeah, I think he is. He's work sick. So the Parks hasn't had a lot go on since the Fourth of July, but they had the Fourth of July. And I know if Chad was here, he would be giving shout-outs or attaboys to the rest of the city employees and personnel and, uh, to the council members who were down there helping, uh, saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, he was very appreciative in our department head meeting of, of all the help that he had in, uh, getting that project to come off. Uh, and I think it was, it was very successful. I don't think we've ever had that many people at the Fourth of July. We were, I think cars may have been parking in the sewer plant, I'm not sure. But we had filled up the disc golf course, we filled up all the parking, they were on the side of the streets. We had a lot of people down there this year.
We had a family with us from Poland.
So it was, it was a great show, as always. We are going to talk about next year making some changes. Uh, one of the things that we're gonna talk about is whether or not to continue serving food. And instead of serving food, allow food trucks to come in and set up.
I would love that idea.
So there'll be a Parks meeting coming up soon, you can express your love for it. But I do think it's something we need to, we need to bring up, we need to have the discussion, whether we change or we don't. It's a, it's a discussion that I think it's time to have. We're serving, uh, I think two thousand hamburgers and fifteen hundred hot dogs and we were out by seven, seven fifteen.
Yeah, in an hour.
Yeah, uh, so it's one of those things, it's, it's a great benefit. We, it started out, it was a benefit, it was a, a give back to the community. We don't have four thousand people, uh, in the city of West Fork and, so what I'm getting at is we had a lot of, a lot of outside people coming in, which is great, they come in to see the city, but at the same time, we, we can't possibly give out that many hot dogs and hamburgers, uh, not to mention the cost of everything has went up. So something, um, that will be in discussion at the next, at a coming Parks meeting. I'm not sure when they'll bring that up, but that is something that's gonna be discussed, I know.
So on the food trucks, would that mean like they pay, say, five hundred per night in a percentage of their sales to set up?
Good.
I mean, I, I was, I didn't know what your thoughts were on that. I mean, I know I need to go to the meeting and see, but I didn't know, you know, since you were bringing it up, I thought, okay, so what were you thinking, how that would work?
So asking me my thoughts, my thoughts would be that they, they got a vendor permit, a vendor sales tax permit and they collected sales tax and that got remitted to the city and, and they set up, uh, you know, we determined some way to, to, uh, to decide what trucks could come in, who we wanted, what type of trucks. I don't care if we charge them or not, uh, we're gonna get sales tax out of it. But that's all up for debate, that's something for the, the Parks Committee to work through and bring to us, is, is my thoughts on it. Anything else on Parks? No? Chief Myers, you're here.
Thanks for being here. They told me we didn't have to be here. Not a lot, uh, eighty-five, eighty-three calls, second, well, it's actually the busiest, likely we've had so far. Blood drive went great, we ended up having seventy-one people show up, sixty-four donated. Um, our goal was fifty-four, so we exceeded our goal. So we do wanna thank everybody that showed up for that. Um, of course, next year they're gonna set our goal to sixty-four, so we gotta do better next year. Um, we have started the, I keep calling it remodels, really not remodeling, repainting. So, it's a chore, so hopefully that'll be done before the end of the month. That'd be nice. But really, other than that's all I got.
Any question for Chief Myers?
Good one.
I was just fixating, anybody ask him?
No, I, I missed.
It was, it was really, really, really close, yeah.
Close to a major blowout, it was a minor blowout.
All right, finally, Christie.
Okay, so we have increased our city bank accounts, um, by about a hundred and seventeen thousand this year. And, uh, overall, we are three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars under budget. One Department, Parks Department is showing over budget. Um, next year they'll probably show even more over budget because of the event, but those will, uh, even themselves out with the rest of the year, all of their main expenses for their sound program and all that will pay heavy the first of the year. So I expect those to even themselves out. The rest of the budgets are all under budget and we are still a little steady with thirteen percent increase on our sales tax. Um, the Water Department has increased their bank balances by fifty-three thousand. Um, and like Keith said, the water loss was at eighteen point seven percent. I can only remember it being that low maybe one or two other times.
It's been a while.
But we've had a lot of few leaks this month, so nobody get real excited about that. Um, with the, as dry as it is, the ground's starting to shift and so we're starting to see leaks. Um, but they're fixing them as quick as they find them, so, and hopefully that. I think, uh, Isaac has figured out that a lot of the water loss we were having was due to the tanks overflowing. They, I think they were overflowing more than we even realized they were. Um, and when he got that skater replaced on that, that's when we've seen a pretty drastic change in that water loss. So we're hoping that that will help it, um, stay down, cause he's, he's able to monitor that a lot better and it's, we haven't been having the tank overflows like we were. Um, the sewer, if you look down the bottom on the sewer income and expense, we were finally in the black this month. Um, for the first time this year, uh, but we still are overall for the year, um, a hundred and thirty-one thousand um, over budget for how much income we're bringing in versus the expense for the sewer system. On the finances, I have gone through, um, and underlined anything that was more than fifty percent um, over budget on the expense lines, there's probably. over budget on the expense lines, there's probably items in there that you'll see that are 50% or more that I have not underlined and that is because those are items that we know why they're over budget and, and they will offset themselves throughout the year. The lines that I have actually put on there are lines that the department heads are just going to have to watch and, and may or may not offset themselves, but all of them have budgets, other line items that are offsetting those at this point, so nothing that stood out to me that was very concerning on any of the, the line items. The city administration building has already spent our, our funds that you guys approved, so we got our security cameras installed up there, we got one camera inside that's in the corner of the lobby and it gets both of the doors, so we now have camera footage for anybody coming in either one of the doors. And then we have the entire parking lot covered now, as well as a monitor by the back door so that when we leave in the evenings, we can see if there's anybody in the parking lot. I don't know how many of you guys remember or not, but it's basically a solid metal door, so we have always just been walking out of it blind, not knowing if anybody was back there or not. So, that's been really nice to have, to, to have some security up there and know that we've got some footage if we ever need it, so I think that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Christie? No? Thanks. So, we don't have any old business, we don't have any new business, do we have any other business? I have some. Misty? How are we coming with the exit interviews for the committees?
I have them.
I'm not quitting.
No, this is for y'all to...
She knew you was going to ask.
I know.
I asked for the last three months.
It was two months, two months. I was tired of asking me, so I've got something. So, I didn't know if people could maybe just take it home, look at it, scratch through what they like, they don't like, then we can maybe look at it next month.
That sounds like a fantastic idea, Misty.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that's, all joking aside, I do think it's something that's, I think it's a good idea.
I do too.
I think it's, it could provide valuable information to, to the city. All right. We talked about Homestead. So, one other thing that we've got coming up that I need to make the council aware of is the city is being sued over a arrest that we made. And the municipal league is representing the city on this, on this case. So, it's being handled out of Little Rock and the case is, it's progressing as a typical lawsuit would, interrogatories are going back and forth, answering questions, who's going to be your witness, you know, those types of things. So, that's where it's, where it's at currently. However, the attorney that's representing the city has sent an email letting me know that, so in cases like this, they will want the mayor and the council present, they would like a quorum of the council present, just so that if there's any decisions to be made, we have a quorum there and can make a decision. The date is, it's a settlement conference on February 27th at 9:00 AM. Where's that at? That's a great question, Jimmy. The federal courthouse magistrate Comstock will be presiding.
She's in Fayetteville.
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, federal courthouse in Fayetteville, it's right there in front of me. So, February 27th at 9:00 AM. So, we, we need to try to at least have a quorum of us available for that.
Hopefully something might get done before then, it's a long ways out.
I think the court system is a little bit backed up. So, we have that coming up before us and... Any other business?
I guess I do have a question.
All right.
Will we get to, I mean, do we, will we get to read it or do we just show up there? Do you know?
Like who, why, what happened?
Do you guys know anything about that arrest?
No, I don't.
I do.
They're not going to ask you any questions. They, they want us there so that if the attorneys and the judge come to whatever agreement, we have a quorum and can, can address that situation.
Okay.
To pay the money.
Okay. We're not on jury duty.
You're not on jury duty, you're not going to be called to testify, you have nothing to add, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Any other, other business?
The community building, the AC don't work in the kitchen and the bathrooms? It does work in there, it don't work?
No, you're correct, it doesn't.
Do we get that fixed or...
Can I bring you a process next time?
I, I was asked, you know, how come it wasn't fixed?
Where is it? It's in the bathroom?
The bathroom and the kitchen.
But that kitchen's open.
When we did the remodel, we chose because of the cost to not replace that one because that was all that it operated and the other ones, other than if you have 300 people in there.
I was just asking.
We'll take care of that, but I mean, I'll be glad to get a process, but just so we know what it will be, but that is like, white isn't white.
I guess somebody was in there cooking and it got pretty hot.
Got warm, got hot in the kitchen. What do they say about that, Marty?
I don't know.
You can't stand the heat, stay out of the kitchen?
Oh, that's right, yeah. Yeah, I do know that.
I always thought of that. No, good point, though. Such a terrible.
Anything else? What about Westfest? It's coming along. Coming along.
We're having a car show.
What's the date? Second? Weekend in September?
September 9th and 10th. Okay.
The beauty pageant is August 26th and it'll be at the Capitol.
So, with that, we'll move to Mayor's comments, I don't have a lot this month. We did, last month we passed a, an amendment to the maintenance of real property ordinance. And with that, KUAF radio picked up on that, they found out about that ordinance and they called, well, they, they visited Bonnie, went out and visited her garden, talked to her. They found out she was chaired that committee that, that helped move that along. And then reached out to me and wanted to do a radio interview and so that should be airing tomorrow at noon and 7:00, Bonnie, is that right? So, that'll be on KUAF, you can go to their website and get the stream of it, or that's 93 point...
91.3.
91.
91.3? Yeah. So, anyway, they, just recognizing that we've passed that and they were, they were excited about the city looking at things like that, they, they really, they kind of dug in on, Tom had mentioned that that was one of the most progressive pollinator ordinances of any city in the nation and she wanted to know where that information came from. I told her it was perhaps subjective, but I don't know that we had data to back that up, but we felt good about it. So, anyway, so that interview will air tomorrow and I'm excited about that, that it's, it's caught the attention of, of some outside, some outside people that are, that are willing to publicize that, talk about it. Always, always excited when we're on the news for a good thing, do what?
Sounds like in a positive manner, too.
Oh, it's in a very positive manner, yeah, very positive. I think they were, they were a little bit under the, they had the understanding that we were trying to pass something more restrictive. And I tried to tell, tell her that, you know, the reason this was brought up in the first place is we realized that there was a need to change that and that, you know, after a couple of months of, we didn't have any real discussions on it, that I'd thrown some ideas out there and that's where the, you know, people kind of got the idea that we were trying to restrict it and I was like, all we're trying to do is generate some, some discussion on this topic. We, the whole reason it was before us is we realized that we needed to do something with it to expand it, so, no, it was a really positive interview and, yeah. Always good to be in the news for positive things, like having your chief of police on Channel 5 News, for good stuff.
Which that is now interviewed live on their...
Is it?
On their app.
I'll let my mom know.
There you go.
My app's not updating.
You may need to close it and reopen it.
Ellie said this was a good interview, I was going to see if we get some public comment on that.
Maybe your Wi-Fi's not working and you, you need the password?
There it is. Ellie says if he had a better counsel, he'd have better expectations of the police department.
Doesn't have much support from his counsel.
I didn't know she's supposed to manage.
I like this, Chief. He says he's not content just to follow in others' footsteps, he likes to blaze his own path. I like that.
Start blazing.
All right, that's all I had. Anything else before we adjourn? No?
I made a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
You don't oppose, no, that motion carries.